I start off with, we're gonna have Pastor Brad Hall.
I don't see him.
I didn't see him here. I don't see him, so I'll do the invocation and commission. Okay. I don't.
He's not in here.
No. And Commissioner Turner will do our pledge of allegiance, so if you'd rise, please bow your head. Lord, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. Thank you for the freedoms that you give us, Lord, and we're just so, so pleased that you're working in our county, that you're working with us, and that you are blessing us, because I believe that we're passing our blessings on to others, Lord, and we just thank you so much for being here, and we ask that we have a good, productive meeting today, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the July 24th regular meeting minutes and the July 12th workshop meeting.
Okay, I have a proper first.
I'll second it.
And a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. And then we're gonna move right into a recess to go to our port authority. So we'll take a recess and move into our port authority. Okay, again, it's the approval of our minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of July 10th regular meeting and July 12th.
Okay, we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion moves. Okay, and then we have this letter of agreement. Did you want to handle it?
Yes, sir. In last year, or earlier this year, the port authority entered into a lease agreement for the barge port warehouse, I guess it was April 1st of this year. That agreement called for no rent for the tenant for the first year, and reduced rental rates for the remainder of the term in exchange for certain improvements that the tenant was supposed to be doing to the building and to be fully operational within a particular time period, and have, you know, new employees. Those things haven't happened. There's been some demolition, but the majority of it hasn't happened. And so at this point, I would like to retain counsel to go ahead and work on exercising the port's authorities, legal authority under the lease agreement, for removal of that tenant, so we can go ahead and try to get that leased out to somebody that will be able to fulfill those obligations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Manning, do we have an approximate cost or cap on what this is going to cost to hire them, or they give us a range?
No, no, sir. I mean, it's, it just all depends on how big the fight.
Should we set a range where you can come back to us if you see it's going over a certain amount?
Well, I mean, you can. I'm not sure what good that does you, because it leaves us in limbo if we get to a certain point. I mean, we have a goal that we need to reach, which is getting the tenant out of there. You get halfway down the field and say, "Well, we don't want to do this anymore," then I'm not sure where that leaves you, but that's certainly up to you all.
Well, maybe, I tell you what, maybe you could bring it back to us if you see the number climbing a little high, that you see it might be getting unrealistic at that point. You could come back to us.
I can certainly give you updates on what.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What it's running.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lyman.
Mr. Manning, good morning.
Morning.
You were responsible for drawing this lease up, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in your estimation, is it pretty standard as far as leases go?
Yes, sir, this is.
I have the same concern that Commissioner Harvey might have, that it could run into some money, and I'd just like to be reassured, I guess, right here, that he's in clear violation.
Oh, clearly. We have a very good lease, and the, in fact, it goes back, this lease, the majority of the lease, is something that I've carried with me over many years. I used to be general counsel for a commercial real estate developer, and it's a lease that I developed many years ago and refined over the years, so it's got many protections in it, and there's no doubt in my mind he's in clear violation of what's required of him.
I'm comfortable with it. Tell them to work fast and diligent.
Mr. Turner.
I have a couple of questions. Why did we, why did we need outside counsel on this one? Is it too, is it gonna be too time-intensive to do it in-house?
Yes, yes, certainly. I mean, it's, it's just me, so I've got the rest of the county's work to be working on, litigating a lot of these additional matters. I don't have any staff.
How did we pick this particular firm? Did we have a continuing service agreement with them? Do they specialize in this type of work? What made us pick this? I don't even know who they are, other than their name, but why did we select them?
History with working with them over the years. They do very good work, and I recommend them for this matter. I've worked with them not only here, but also in other places I've worked. They're a very good firm.
Okay, well, particularly me, I agree with the other two commissioners that we need to be kind of kept up to date on what's happening as far as costs on this and where we are.
Sure.
As we go along, maybe we could do it in our monthly update at the workshop.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no problem. Did you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other, if you're ready to entertain a motion, I move to approve item B on the port authority, the letter of agreement to retain counsel for representation in the commercial lease dispute.
Okay, I have a proper first.
I'll second it.
And a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moves.
Thank you.
All right, and now we will adjourn our port authority and reconvene our scheduled meeting, and we'll move to our presentation, which is a little different than the agenda. I'm gonna have Mr. Joe Pickens come forward from the college, please. Hope I didn't catch you off-guard.
What happens about putting that down?
Nothing.
It won't blow up or nothing?
All right. Well, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here, as always, and County Administrator, thank you for meeting with me this morning. So I'm here today as the current Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, a role that I have played before and that Mr. Turner has as well. And I'll remind you that under Commissioner Turner's leadership, this Chamber of Commerce wasn't just a good Chamber of Commerce. This Chamber of Commerce was the National Chamber of Commerce of the Year for a chamber of our size. And so while I see that oftentimes the efforts of the Chamber don't always show up in social media or in self-promotion, I can certainly tell you that, especially under Terry Turner's term, this Chamber was recognized by those who examine us as being the exemplary Chamber in the United States of America, not just Florida. With that backdrop, I want to talk about two areas of the Chamber that are the most important, I think, to the community. We're all busy people who are on the Chamber Board. If we didn't think there was value in investing our time and our resources in the county, in the way that the Chamber does, we would invest our time and our energies in something else. And so, at y'all's request, I want to talk about tourism and economic development, two things that you invest in the Chamber for, and two things that you expect the Chamber to accomplish on your behalf, because we're an arm and instrumentality that can do that. So you know that our, one of our main roles is to provide support, to administer the Putnam County Tourism Development Council, and to distribute the monies that are generated by the bed tax. I'm sure you are also aware that over the last decade or so, the amount of bed tax that's been generated by outsiders, not local folks, by and large, has more than doubled. And the economic development dollars that we're able to contribute by others coming into Putnam County is very valuable. So what have we supported in the last year or so as it relates to tourism and our TDC dollars? We've awarded $70,000 for approximately 30 events, activities, and festivals collectively. We estimate that these events brought in an overall economic impact of well over $8 million to the county. These events cover the gamut of the things that are available to be done and had in Putnam County. The events include five golf tournaments, five bass tournaments, six other sporting events, four festivals, and 10 cultural events. We've had two baseball tournaments out at the college. You might not think that a baseball tournament generates a whole lot of economic development in the county, but it does. The two tournaments alone attracted 321 competitors, each of them here on their teams for two to four nights, plus 39 coaches, and over 2,000 spectators, all coming in from out of town, staying in our hotels and eating at our local restaurants. Two of the golf tournaments, the azalea and senior azalea, held in this past March, attracted 305 participants and reported direct expenditures over a quarter of a million dollars. Looking ahead, this fall, we funded, we funded things that include the bartram frolics. In September, we're hosting the Florida League, the Fishing League Worldwide Tournament, bringing approximately 400 anglers, that's 200 boats, to the county in October 11th through 13th. And November 1st through the 4th, the college is going to host the Florida State Police Athletic League Boxing Tournament in Tooton Gymnasium. In December, we anticipate that the Jarvis Williams Holiday Basketball Tournament will bring in more people than they did last year, and last year they had 16 teams, 15 people on a team for three nights, totaling over 600 rooms rented in Putnam County. We're very proud to have a very strong relationship with the Bassmaster Elite Tournament because of the Chamber's efforts. And I say this, I didn't have a darn thing to do with whether Bassmasters came back here or not. It's all the volunteers and Chamber members and the Chamber staff that are behind me that have worked like heck to maintain a relationship with Bassmasters Elite over some pretty rocky times, when the riverfront was being changed and it didn't facilitate their coming back, and they didn't for a while. The Chamber doggedly pursued Bassmasters Elite and convinced them to come back to Palatka and give us another try. One of the reasons for that was that when they came the first time, we were an exemplary host. Your Chamber has been advertised by Bassmasters Elite as the place to call for towns that aspire to host a Bassmaster Elite Tournament. That, we achieved that distinction after the very first one that we had. It's because of that reputation and the people in Putnam County willing to roll up their sleeves, some of them, again, not me, willing to get up at 2:00 a.m. and help park boats and cars and do everything else that's needed behind the scenes, that people that watch it on TV at 4:00 in the afternoon have no idea actually happens. Kind of like Bill, when the Catfish Festival comes around and all people notice that he's in behind a swamp cabbage bucket, and nobody really knows that they've been working for four days to make that happen. Well, that's what happens with the Chamber a whole lot of times. People just don't have any idea that the Chamber's been working on something for four days or four weeks or four months, or in some cases, for years, and then it finally comes to fruition. If that hadn't happened, people wouldn't know. Because you see, people don't know that things don't happen. Lots of people don't know the work that it takes to pursue things on behalf of the Chamber that don't come to fruition. But without the Chamber, there would never be an opportunity for them to come to fruition. We all know, and I certainly know, as a lifelong resident of here and somebody that's chosen to make whatever career it is I've made here, that we've got some challenges that we have to overcome. But at a time when we all see, I think, the highest degree of optimism that we've experienced in this county, and maybe even in this state, in a decade, now is the time when the Chamber can be the most valuable, because now is the time when opportunities are truly out there for tourism and, my next topic, economic development. The Chamber's currently working on four active clients, which collectively total over $1 billion in capital investments, and would create 600 new jobs to the county, not including construction jobs for the projects themselves. Gentlemen, we may get none of them. We may get them all. Chances are, it will be neither of those two. But I can tell you, without the Chamber as the arm of economic development for folks to have the ability to contact, we wouldn't be even in consideration for them. The fact that we don't get every project that we pursue, or we're not successful in attracting every project that considers, doesn't mean that our work is in vain. It means that our work is our work, and it's what we do. I'd like to meet the Chamber that has a 100% success rate, because I would vote for that Chamber to be the Chamber of the Year over us. The truth of the matter is that that just doesn't happen. It's my view that Project Purple would not have existed in Putnam County. It'd have been somewhere else, but for the fact that this County Commission supported that project, and the Chamber was there to be in constant communication with Georgia Pacific to express that support in manners that public officials aren't allowed to do, because of the constraints that you have, because of your elected status. Others may say that Project Purple would have come here no matter what, and I suppose that's a point of view that somebody can share. But I have an abiding conviction that but for the fact that this county, through this Chamber, and through this Commission, has generated incredible support for both Seminole Electric and Georgia Pacific, that those projects would have gone to some other Seminole location, and certainly to some other coke-related location. So I want to pause and thank you for the investment that you make in the Chamber, and I hope that you see that the economic development that we are generating is beneficial, even when we're not always successful. The last thing I want to talk about, and there's more stuff on my sheet that I'd be happy to share with you, but you've indulged me long enough. I have an abiding conviction that Quint Studer would have never visited Putnam County but for the fact that a member of my board reached out to him and talked to him about the difficulties that we were having, and asked him about the successes that he enjoyed in Pensacola. It was the Chamber that reached out to Quint Studer and invited him here. It was the Chamber that hosted him for a dinner Thursday night, so we could hear, business leaders could hear one-on-one what he had to say, and how he thought we could improve ourselves. It was the Chamber and this board and this County Administrator that orchestrated the meeting that was had on Friday, a meeting sadly that I couldn't attend, because it was graduation day, and Representative Bobby Payne was my speaker. But I understand, by all accounts, that it was an incredibly energizing event for the county. That event wouldn't have occurred without the support and the efforts of your Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. Now I ask you this, if it hadn't ever occurred, would people know what they missed? Would people know the opportunity that his involvement and his input and his knowledge represents to the county if it had never occurred at all? I suggest to you that the biggest value that this Chamber has to this county is in all of the things that people don't know occurs. Sometimes they don't care whether they occur or not. But gentlemen, I do, and that's why I'm here before you today, and that's why I thank you for the support that you've given us, and hope that you will continue to give us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Now we, Ms. Sharon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I get to come before y'all twice in one month. How lucky am I? First of all, I do want to fill you in. A couple of weeks ago, I came before you and told you about our 4-H judging livestock team and their dinner and auction, that they were having to raise funds to help them get to the national contest. I did want to let you know that it was an extremely successful event. Thank you for your support, those of you that assisted with that. They also had tremendous community support, and they are well on their way to the national contest in October. And so hopefully, after that contest, we can bring them before you sometime in November, December, and have those youth recognized. I'm gonna have to put on my glasses, because I'm just at that age. Today, though, I'm here to recognize three members of our UF IFAS Putnam County Extension Team who have been recognized this past year for their outstanding work for the citizens of Putnam County. As the local office for the University of Florida IFAS, county faculty are responsible for developing and implementing programs that address the needs of their clientele, whether it's helping ag producers adopt best management practices on the farm, teaching homeowners Florida-friendly landscape principles such as using less water and fertilizer, teaching residents how to manage or prevent diabetes, or helping youth become responsible citizens. Our extension agents work within their communities to address all of these issues and more. Each of these agents is a member of state and national organizations, and one of the expectations of UF is that they share this scholarly work with other professionals across the state and in other states. This leads to opportunities to apply for and be nominated for awards within their prospective organizations and within the University of Florida. So I'm pleased to tell you that this group of professionals have represented Putnam County and UF very well this past year. On your agenda, you'll see the list of awards that they have won. Some of these have been for excellence in programming, written materials, videos, and other educational pieces that support their programs. The citizens of Putnam County are the direct beneficiaries of this work. So at this time, I'd like to recognize the following staff members. Evelyn Fletcher, who you otherwise know as Prissy, who is our residential horticulture agent. And in this past year, she has received one national, one regional, and six state awards for extension program excellence. Next. Next is Wendy Lynch, who is our Family and Consumer Sciences Agent. First of all, Wendy has recently received notification that after a year-long process through UF, she has been promoted to Extension Agent Three. That is a huge accomplishment. We congratulate her for that. In addition, she has won three national, two regional, and eight state awards for extension program excellence. She also has been recognized for the Distinguished Service Award from the National Extension Association of Family and Consumer Sciences, and in a few weeks, she will receive the UF IFAS Extension Mentor Award at our state conference.
Right. Congratulations.
Next is Crystal Macasio, our 4-H Youth Development Agent, who also provides leadership for this 4-H livestock judging team and all the other wonderful 4-H activities in the county. Crystal, this past year, has been recognized with two national, three regional, and five state awards. She has also received the Distinguished Service Award from the National Association of Extension 4-H Agents, and the UF IFAS Sadler Distinguished Extension Professional Award. There is one other newer member of our team who's not with us today, because she is teaching an in-service training in South Florida. But Dr. Wendy Museline, who is our multi-county agricultural agent, has been an addition to our team since October, and so I do want to say she is a very valuable member of our team, and we, she's already doing great things for Putnam County, and will continue to do that. So at this time, I just want to recognize these people and thank them for their hard work. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna get a picture, and we see that somebody else got a Superior Accomplish Award.
Yes. Ms. Sharon Trine herself.
I know you weren't. That's why we were.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, while you folks are having your photograph taken, I'd just like to say a few words while we're in this moment of photo-taking. But these two programs this morning, the Chamber of Commerce and the IFAS Department, are two shining examples of the work that's being done on behalf of the citizens of Putnam County and the Board of County Commissioners, that a lot of times goes unrecognized. And I personally would like to thank the Chamber for being here this morning. I know the hard work that they do, and participating in a couple of the events that they put on. It's a tremendous asset to Putnam County, the work that the Chamber does. And the IFAS Department, the County Extension Office, Ms. Sharon Trine and her staff out there, it's just, you know, it's remarkable the work that's being done here in Putnam County, and we all should just be extremely proud as we can of the work that's being done here. And I personally thank them all for being here this morning and sharing that. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of times, nobody sees what goes on behind the scenes. Let's begin with that.
Yes, sir. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something. I want to say to Dana and her staff, I remember the first bass tournament. I remember the two in the morning. I remember helping the ladies park their trailers in a secured spot where they could go off and shop and come back and get their trailers when they needed to. Those little things that we did in the beginning that are still being done now paid huge benefits for Putnam County. And I tell you, if you've never seen Dana up at 2:00, or Julie, and last all day till dark, I don't know how they get their energy to do what they do, because I try to find me a spot to sit down quickly. But I tell you, they're hard workers, and we are lucky and grateful to have the Chamber and the staff here that we have in Putnam County. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to say that.
I got a one-up you.
Okay, let's go.
Give a little shout-out to Brian, too.
Yes.
It's rare to get a really good economic development professional in a rural county, but one with a financial background, which Brian brings to the table, is equally important, because not only does he get the prospect, now he can hook them up with the finances. And we're very lucky, and I just want to bring that fact out, Brian, and thank you for your services and for Mr. Pickens' leadership as President of the Chamber. Thank all of you very much for what you do.
That's right.
Thank you.
And Ms. Chairman, Ms. Sharon?
Yes, sir.
You and your staff, remarkable. I do need to talk to you later. Give me a call. But if you haven't been to the dinner that they have for Thanksgiving, man, what a meal. But y'all just are everywhere, and you thanked us for helping, but it was our pleasure to go the other night and cook steaks, and I'm sure the other Commissioners feel the same way. We enjoyed that, and helping raise money for the 4-H. You know, it's just wonderful for us to give back, and we thank you for all your hard work that you do. I've never yet picked up the phone that I didn't need, and that they weren't there to help us, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Cheryl Lynch. Another behind-the-scenes.
Janice is gonna be joining us as well. Hello, thank you for letting us come before you this morning. I'm Janice Donaldson, and I'm the Regional Director of the Florida SBDC at the University of North Florida, and Putnam County is in our 18-county region. And Cheryl's gonna make the report that she normally makes, but she didn't want me to do this, but I'm sorry, I'm the boss, so I'm doing it. Cheryl has been recognized several times, and I just wanted to make sure that this Commission was aware of that. In June, our Florida SBDC Network State Headquarters presents awards to employees within our network, and we have over 250 employees statewide in the SBDC Network. And the first award that Cheryl received was a Disaster Recovery Award, Hurricane Irma Disaster Recovery Award, that recognizes outstanding employees and partners for their efforts to help small businesses rebuild and recover following Hurricane Irma. And so the Valor Award was presented to 10 employees statewide, and we have over 150 consultants who provided assistance. And as you all remember, this hurricane affected the whole state of Florida, with the exception of our offices in Pensacola and Tallahassee. So Cheryl was one of those 10. She received a medal for her heroism, that's a weird word, dedication and selfless efforts to help small businesses following the storm. And in addition to her medal and her cash prize, for being such a great supporter, she received a letter of congratulations from Governor Rick Scott for that effort, so. And then, a little bit later on, Cheryl received the Florida State Star Award from the Florida SBDC Network. SBDC Network statewide, and this is the highest accolade achievable by SBDC employees, and it recognizes extraordinary performers who have made strong contributions to their state network. And one of the, I'm so happy to see IFAS receive recognition today because one of the reasons that Cheryl was selected for this award was her work in getting us additional federal funding to do an agricultural export marketing plan to help small farmers learn how to export their products. And IFAS was a key player and partner in that effort, so we really appreciate that. So Cheryl received, this is a really cool award, but Cheryl received the superhero award as a Florida State Star, and she'll receive, and she'll receive an all-expenses-paid trip to Washington DC next month and tour the White House and be recognized with all the other 49 State Star Awards in our network. So congratulations, Cheryl.
Cheryl, do you have a superhero outfit?
Only in private. I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the impact numbers on the report that was given to you.
I have none.
No, no questions? We did have another success story of a business that launched an interlocking, e-commerce business. Things are coming along great. We've got a lot of bigger things happening. I did want to give you a little insight as to, we always keep our ear to the ground as to what's transpiring around our 18-county region. And because we're surrounded by several counties, Alachua, Clay, and St. John's, that are absolutely booming, it's going to have a big impact on what's going to happen here in Putnam. We're seeing a lot of folks looking to come to the area to start businesses, so be on a lookout for that. In addition, unemployment is really low. So when there's change in economy, we see a shift on how small businesses start. So what you'll see coming up in the trends is less small businesses starting because people are more secure in their jobs, but you'll see a lot more capital investment happening, a lot more loans happening and things of that nature. And if you look, we've already had over $3 million year-to-date in loans within the county alone, so that's a good sign. That means money's coming into the community and it's being invested here, so.
Good. Congratulations, Cheryl.
Congratulations, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations and thank you for, because I know that there's a lot, you don't hear about all the small businesses that come to you with questions, but thank you for being there to answer those questions.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me get a drink of water.
Okay, Mrs. Mary Garcia. And we've got a proclamation that will be read by Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Putnam County Proclamation Number 2018, declaring August 2018 Breastfeeding Awareness Month in Putnam County, Florida. Whereas breastfeeding is an issue of great importance to women, infants, their families, and their physicians, and is therefore of interest to Putnam County. And whereas the Academy, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Academy of Family Physicians, the American Academy of Breastfeeding Medicine, and the World Health Organization recommend that babies be exclusively breastfed for the first six months of age and continue to be breastfed until 12 months of age or longer as mutually desired. And whereas only 18.4% of Florida infants and 11.5% of Putnam County infants are still exclusively breastfeeding at six months of age. And whereas the Florida Department of Health in Putnam County WIC program has increased the rate of infants that have been ever breastfettered from 58.6% in December 2012 to 76.48% as of December 2017. Whereas in January 2011, the United States Surgeon General announced a call to action to support breastfeeding that identifies barriers to optimal breastfeeding and healthcare practices, employment, communities, research, public health, infrastructure, and social networks, while also recommending methods in which families, communities, employers, and healthcare professionals could help eliminate those barriers to improve breastfeeding rates and increase support for breastfeeding. And whereas research, research shows that human milk and breastfeeding provides advantages to general health, growth, and development, while significantly decreasing the risk of a large number of acute and chronic diseases, including among those, among others, sudden infant death syndrome, asthma, allergies, diabetes, viral and bacterial infections, childhood obesity, childhood leukemia, necrosing entercolitis, and infant mortality. And whereas mothers who breastfed have a decreased risk of breast, uterine, and ovarian cancer, postpartum depression, and osteoporosis later in life. And whereas the nutrients exclusive to human milk are vital to the growth, development, and maintenance of the human brain and cannot be manufactured, and whereas recent research estimates the upwards of 18.5 billion in healthcare and premature death-related expenses could be saved each, each year if 90% of the women were to meet breastfeeding recommendations. And whereas breastfeeding has positive economic impacts on families by decreasing the need to pay for medical care for a sick infant and by eliminating the need to purchase infant formula. And whereas the health benefits to breastfed children and their mothers result in lower healthcare costs for employers, less employee time off to care for sick children, and higher productivity of an employee loyalty, and whereas employers, employees, and society benefit by supporting a mother's decision to breastfeed and by helping to reduce the obstacles to initiating and continue breastfeeding. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners on the 14th day of August 2018, that the month of 2018, August 2018, as Breastfeeding Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners recognize the unique health, economic, and societal benefits that breastfeeding provides to babies, mothers, families, and the community as a whole, and affirms that the Board of County Commissioners should, should work to ensure that barriers to initiation and continuation of breastfeeding are removed. Be it further proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners encourages the Florida Department of Health and other stakeholders to work together to explore ways to improve women's access to breastfeeding support services in medical, social, and employment settings, to facilitate increased awareness and education about breastfeeding, to explore and encourage the use of breastfeeding supports, and to improve the availability of effective breastfeeding resources and community support services. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this proclamation.
Second, and breathe Larry, take a breath.
Yes.
We're going to get a tag team on the next one, Mary.
That was difficult.
We have a proper first to second, all those say. Hi, thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Drink of water.
Thank you.
She's kind of shy, but I'm going to bring her up, up front.
Ms. Karen Riley joined our team as our breastfeeding coordinator this year. We've made incredible strides and we probably won't be able to tell the difference it'll make for, for years as these children over the last five years that I've been a health officer have changed almost, I mean, it's gone up over 50%, which is going to be an incredible difference to our children. And then, as a Eureka movement, sad that we had to actually proclaim it, we've had all 50 states now have declared it legal to breastfeed in public. So it's sad that we actually had to do a proclamation in each state.
I know, right?
Amazing. And you said it all, so I was going to add a few little tidbits, but I, I think you have it all. I think it's just critical breastfeeding is, we call it our superpower. We invite you all to come view our, our breastfeeding superpower wall. We call it the Milky Way. So it's actually made the newspaper a couple of times, so we're real excited. It is, it is one of the things that is inherent to women that we can do that, that is a God-given gift, so we thank you for it. And we'd love to have a picture with you all.
Come on in.
So come on, come on.
Put Larry in the middle there.
Y'all congratulating me on.
You did great. I thought you were going to have to, you know you need to come down. You're already telling me.
I heard y'all snicker. I was just wondering if you were going to pass out.
Did you get a vote on this topic?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can't talk anymore after that.
Bet it takes more than that.
Okay. We'll now have public comment. That will try to limit to three minutes, and you give your name and your address, and I'd like to start and be very honored to have Ms. Faye Parkman come forward. It's good to see her. Ms. Faye has been battling some health issues and it's, she loves to chastise us and we
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's been a long time since I've been able to get here.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here today for a reason. County Road 315, which you've all got in a packet, Tony was nice enough to hand them out. I know somebody personally that lives in South 315 and travels to Ocala every day. For at least the last 10 years, there's been a sign there that 315 was an evacuation route. Well, when I started going to the road department and asking them to fix all this stuff on 315, they told me it was not an evacuation route. They as much as called me a liar. That's the wrong thing to do to me because I've never lied to any one of you. So, the man was nice enough to start at 315, he lives in District 5, he drove the whole way, 315, to the Putnam County line, the Clay and Putnam County line. No sign. So, he was nice enough to go on, find me all the state statutes. And if you look on page two, it tells you, we have to have signs up. The other thing, if you go on and look some more, we have to keep those county roads prepared. Yes, I understand you're going to fix the highway, but last year, when Governor Scott ordered people to take a secondary route, we could not have gotten out of our driveway. 315 was that busy. This year, I counted from the curve 60 trees that are ready to come down across 315. They're splitting at the bottom from the rain. If we get another hurricane or bad rain, you're going to have trees that may kill somebody. On the passenger side of going from my house down to 20, the brush is growing out on 315. And it had better not scratch any one of the, our door trucks because my husband will be very angry. So, you guys are in charge of the road department. The tractors set out there. They went down into the estates, and I vote for a fact, Mr. Harvey asked them to please go cut 315. Cut the brush back. No, the tractor left. Has it been back? No. If they don't have the help, the people that you have in charge of those departments better know how to get in those tractors and use them. And I did give all of you a copy. I gave one to the sheriff and I have one for the road department. Okay? I'll let you all take care of the road department. I have one last thing to please say. There's a lot of people I have to thank you for being able to be here. All the people that used to see come with me, they helped us for eight and a half months. The sheriff even called me to see how I was. He called me on Christmas Day. Larry Harvey called us all the time, came to the house to check, see if we needed anything, helped Sparky. Those people deserve a great big thank you. What other county commissioner in this county can say, they go visit the people in their district that need help. There's one other thing. Dr. DeJuke sent me to Dr. Carvilla, and I go to him, and I go to Dr. Sullivan. Those three doctors are three of the best in this county. I wouldn't be standing here if it wouldn't be for them and a lot of prayers. And I know Mr. Pickens, you told me you prayed for me, I know Larry Harvey does. I'm on a lot of prayer chains because without that, I wouldn't be standing here right now. So I just have a big thank you to say to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Over here.
Yes.
Could I make just a couple of comments before your next public speaker, please?
Yes, sir.
I was so thrilled today to see Faye and Sparky here, and I've had the pleasure to come to these meetings for a number of years and, and thinking back and, you know, some names that some of you will know and some of you won't, but Stella, Ms. Mary, Dolly, and then today we have Faye and Sparky, and Tim Hoteling, and Mr. Ballenge, and a few others that come. And sometimes their words are biting, and we may not agree with them, but what I am proud of all this is that it allows us to have a conversation with people that love this county as much as all of us that get to serve in these seats that we have. And want to wish Faye and Sparky well in her recovery, and encourage others that feel the need to make comments, that they come help us because just like at home, good communications makes for a better life and a better family, and that's what we still are here. So congratulations and thanks for being here today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Omar Christian. I'm a contractor for Regis Energy, and I basically, basically, there's two pieces of property that Putnam County has, and it's very important to us. Basically, we want to either lease that property or buy the property from Putnam County because we want to do a solar project. So my company sent me out here as a last ditch effort to talk to you guys, if you could work something out so we can either buy the property or lease it from you, so we can do a solar project on there.
Okay. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to direct him to staff and, and Mike Brown in the room today? Is Mike back there?
Yeah, Mike's up.
Mr. Omar, that's Mike Brown. He's our head planner, and he'll be happy to give you his card, and that's who you would go to to identify the property and see what our status is, and we'll start there. And of course, we, you know, if it's something the county's holding and we have no use for, we'd be very glad to get rid of it.
Yeah, we'd like to know which property it is that you're interested in, because we are definitely wanting to get rid of some of the excess property that we have.
Yeah. You say it's a solar project?
Yes.
Oh, great.
So, and we definitely need those two parcels of land to complete the solar project.
Okay.
We can't do it without it.
All right. Omar, Mr. Brown will be your contact there, and he'll get ahold of us if we need additional help through there. What part of the county is it in? We'll know which commissioner.
I, I have the parcel numbers right here.
That won't help us.
I have a map of it. I'm, I'm here to show you guys. I'm not from this area, but.
Yeah, and we, we don't know the parcel numbers.
Yeah, I have the parcel numbers.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend, if I could?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
It really, it's got to go to Mr. Brown. It can't come to us.
Mr. Christian, just make an appointment with Administrator Suggs. I think that would be a more appropriate start to see if it's, if it's a county-owned piece of property, and then perhaps he can help him from there to move forward.
Yes, the county owns it.
That's a better contact. You get the big boss.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Mr. Christiansen? Mr. Christiansen?
Mr. Christiansen.
He's trying to give you his card, sir.
There you go, sir. Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Joe Wells?
Hey, that's not Joe Wells.
Doesn't look like Joe Wells.
That's not Joe Wells.
Wait a minute. Not on the card. He's a little taller.
Well, Colonel Wells, you grew a foot.
Oh, boy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Obviously, I'm not Joe Wells. Joe was going to speak on, on my behalf as I. Joe was going to speak on my behalf, as I greeted some of our students, parents, and faculty who started back the first day of school today, so I apologize for my tardiness. The nature of my visit and the reason for my public comments today is to echo the sentiments of Mr. Joe Pickens regarding the Chamber of Commerce. I'm sorry that I did not get to hear his remarks, but I hear that they were very well spoken. I wanna take an opportunity to speak on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, and specifically on the Tourist Development Council and some of their efforts in helping us with an endeavor that is a monumental undertaking for a small county like ours. As most of you are aware, in November, our Police Athletic League here will host the State Pau Boxing Tournament here. Had it not been for the Tourist Development Council and their commitment to donate several thousand dollars as an infusion to help us host this event, I can most certainly tell you that these... this event would have never been made possible without their efforts. And initially, our State Pau Coordinator, who is out of Jacksonville, had some reservations about hosting the event here. He was concerned, number one, that we didn't have a venue that would accommodate everyone, and secondly, that there would not be enough bed space and accommodations for all those that would attend. With the help of the Chamber, we were able to convince them to bring this event here to a smaller venue that would be much more accommodating for all of these local students here. As you're aware, our Pau focuses on serving underprivileged children throughout the county. And this Pau tournament will actually bring in Pau boxers from all of the state of Florida, Southern Georgia, the Bahamas, the Virgin Islands, and Puerto Rico. Again, we service underprivileged children that are at risk, who might not otherwise ever be able to attend. And one key point that I'll make, that I think this event is so important here, is that had it not been for the efforts of our Pau and for the Tourist Development Council to assist us in hosting this event, all of these children's parents may not ever have an opportunity to see them attend and participate in an event of this magnitude. So, again, I want to extend a sincere heartfelt thank you, not only to the Chamber, but also to the Tourist Development Council for their commitment in helping us to bring this event here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close that portion, and we'll move to our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I need R. Pull, please, sir.
R? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull N and O.
N and O?
I was gonna pull O, but it's already been pulled. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Pickens?
I was gonna pull O also.
Okay, that sounds like... I was gonna pull O also. Okay, so we'll start with Mr. Turner.
Okay, on N, it's the Tricel Avenue Outfall. We discussed it in workshop.
Yes, sir.
I didn't feel like that we, as a commission, consented on moving this one forward, but I guess after listening to the minutes and it's still open to interpretation if we did. The... At the very least, if we did consent to move it forward, we moved it forward while saying that if we could find any savings, that we would do that by change order. Well, normally, I would take this and ask it to go back to workshop, but in this particular instance, evidently, that's a pretty critical area in the road base. And so, what I would like to request at this time, and while I realize that it's better to use concrete pipes instead of metal culverts, it costs a lot more to use concrete pipe. So, what I am going to recommend here this morning is that Public Works replace this covert with another metal covert like it's in there now. It would be probably 60 to 70 percent of the cost of this project. And our Better Place money that's being spent on this is... has reduced down the money that we had budget for these type projects, or the money that was left to do these type of projects, has dwindled down to where we don't have a lot of it left. And like I said, I always like to do the best if we can. But we'll get 25 years out of that metal covert, and then maybe at that time, we won't be quite as physically constrained as what we are at the moment, and the... and it will be fixed. And not only that, I'm going to challenge press, or Mr. Tompkins, excuse me, that we do part of this in-house too, if we can, so we can even further reduce the cost of it. Where it's difficult to do it in-house with concrete pipe, it's not as difficult to do it in-house with metal. So, they do it every day in areas all over the county, so maybe we could furnish the dirt, or furnish the dump trucks, or do something, or do whatever's necessary to make this happen, like we do everywhere else in different areas, so...
Mr. Turner, have you seen this site? Have you been to Tricel and seen it?
Yes, sir, I know it's bad, and that's the reason why I'm not asking it to go back to workshop, Commissioner. I know that it's...
Also, it's elevated, so I don't know if that has bearing or not, but it's elevated. It's not one that lays in the ground or in a train. So, I can support that. It's my district, but I know that it's critical. You are correct, and we have to do something.
And that's exactly the reason why I didn't request it to go back to workshop, because I know how critical it is that it move forward. I just feel like we need to also be as physically responsible as we possibly can, physically responsible as we possibly can, which means it's worked all these years with a metal covert. We ought to be able to use a metal covert back.
I'm on board. I can support that, but I'd like to hear presses... Can you tell me, because it's elevated, that the metal will be safe?
Yes, sir. The metal pipe is sufficient, but all plastic pipe, metal pipe, concrete pipe, all meet DOT specifications. Concrete pipe has 100-year service life. That is the best pipe we can put in the ground. Metal pipe has a 25, maybe 30-year life cycle, and the plastic pipe has been certified for a 50-year life cycle. There is a cost savings to go to those type of pipes. Also, we do work with the contractor, supplying material, dirt, whatever we can do to cut his costs down, which will help our costs go down. So, we work very well with this particular contractor in reducing our costs and providing whatever we can to help reduce that. So, I can fully support this recommendation on this item.
All right.
As I remember, our discussion and a workshop, it was you were gonna do whatever you could to keep the costs down.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just really wanna congratulate or say to Commissioner Turner publicly that this is the exact thinking we need, is to think outside the box on these items, and to think with you. I mean, I'm sure he's done his homework on this, as he does, but to get with you and make sure that these numbers are right. And I congratulate Commissioner Turner for... and Commissioner Libel, even for all of us joining together and finding cost savings where we can, because every dollar does add up. And I appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Okay, you remember that when we get to your district.
Mr. Chairman?
The one that's been overlooked for the past 16 years by... Did I say that out loud?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before this, I would like to ask Mr. Tompkins, if you could, go ahead and start providing some type of tracking mechanism for the amount of assistance we provide to our contractors, that they're using our equipment, and if we're bringing our dirt and things like that, so we can see what those cost savings are as well, please.
We already do that. We track that through the work orders and the daily timesheets that work crews do do.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'd like to see that sometime. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, because this is very critical that it move forward today and not be delayed any longer before somebody gets hurt in this area of the county, I would like to try and offer a motion that we can get this covered, that we move this forward, and we give you the... or give the administrator the authorization to sign the task order, knowing that there's going to be a reduction by using the methods that we discussed here this morning.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second. Okay, so we have a proper first and a proper second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that one?
It's moved.
Okay, Mr. Tompkins, just stay there, because O also is a...
Part of you, and that's Mr. Turner's also.
Yes, on O, I would like to request that it return to workshop for a discussion on in-workshop.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
I agree.
Yeah, that was my concern. I'd like to have this workshopped again, because there's plenty of time to renew this contract if we choose to do so, isn't there? So, we could take it back to a workshop?
We have. Yes, sir. I have no objection to that. We were just trying to... It was up for renewal. I'm not sure the exact renewal date.
Okay. So, we all in favor to move that to workshop?
That be done by consensus.
It can be done. Yes, consensus.
Okay, then we'll move this to workshop. Okay. Mr. Libel, you have R. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Thank you.
R is Joe Wells. I'm sorry.
Yes.
The real Joe Wells.
The real Joe Wells.
No, thank you, and I appreciate your question on this. This actually gives us a pretty good opportunity to explain some differences you're starting to see and some grant funding for the sheriff's office, so I'll be brief. But when Sheriff Deloach came into office, first thing... One of the first things he ordered was a complete retooling or changing the way we investigate sexual and domestic violence. So, we did a study on that, and we did a... basically, a cost analysis on it, and we determined that in order to meet his objectives, we needed to completely retrain all of our deputies and detectives who handle sexual and domestic violence, which is the vast majority of them, and also was gonna require a significant amount of expenditures for that training. The training was expensive, including the overtime and the instructors we had to fly in from other locations and the equipment. So, we received a series of grants. This is a final follow-up grant for that. The first series of grants taught all of our employees how to investigate these types of crimes better. And I'll give you the 50-cent version of that. But what we found in domestic and sexual violence cases, oftentimes, we have in the past, and this is law enforcement across the country, we began by not believing the victim, because the victim's story often changed. There was facts mostly dealing with women. There were facts that we thought they should remember, but they don't. And so, that caused oftentimes their crimes to be discounted, and then no justice ever brought. So, we've refocused that. Our new philosophy is begin by believing. We even trained all of our personnel on what we call trauma-informed interviews, where we understand the fact that the victims of these crimes are often confused. They often mistake the facts. They often don't remember. But we've learned how to work with these victims to draw those facts out. That was an incredibly expensive amount of training, and that was grant-funded. Because of the fact, one of the reasons that we will continue to receive a grant like you see today, which is for the equipment, is we were nationally recognized for our implementation of that grant. We actually, the grant paid for several of our employees to fly to Chicago and speak with about 3,000 law enforcement officers from across the country to explain how we've implemented that. So, as a result, you're gonna see some follow-up grants coming through. This is a $12,750 grant for some very highly technical photography equipment that we can use to produce trial-ready photographs of victims' injuries in both sexual and domestic violence. So, that's basically what you're seeing here, and you'll continue to see more of these grants from the Violence Against Women Act and the Excellence in Sexual Assault Investigation Act. So, they'll probably continue to be coming through. Just wanted to kind of fill you in on why you're gonna keep seeing small versions of these grants come through for a period of time. All right, any questions?
Good work.
Yeah, no questions. Just to thank you for what you're doing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to pass a consent agenda with the exception of N and O.
Second, okay. Do we have a proper first and a proper second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Consent agenda moves, except for N and O. Okay. Mr. Tim Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no items today, other than to remind you that Ms. Frank will be attending your workshop this afternoon and talking about...
Been warned.
Yes.
Bring your CAFRA with you.
Bring your CAFRA with you. It's such an interesting document.
Yes, it is.
Hey, I was so scared. I brought it this morning. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Appointments? Mr. Turner?
I have none today, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to... I think they're working on the Library Board, but they haven't got there yet. Ms. Stella, is that correct? You're working on it, but haven't got there yet on the Library Board appointment? Okay. So, I have none today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I have none, but I am working... I reached out to the lady that was recommended by Ms. Warren for the Library Board, and I've not heard back from her. So, I'll try it again today and see if I can reach her. Hope to have that appointment filled by the next meeting.
I have none, but I am working, and hopefully, we'll have an appointment for the Library Board next meeting.
Mr. Libel?
I have none, and I'm not working on any.
All right.
They're full.
All right. County Administrator?
I have no comments today, sir.
Okay. Wow. Mr. Manning?
I have to correct the record. Earlier, I said that I have no staff, and that's not quite accurate. I have no attorney staff, but I have a stellar legal assistant and paralegal now, someone that had taken the ambition to get her paralegal certification. Of course, I'm talking about Tabitha Lassiter.
Yes, Tabitha.
She's invaluable to me and the county, and so I wanted to correct the record in that regard.
I'm so glad you did that, because she just one employee of the quarter, and it was quite an oversight by Mr. Manning, but he saved itself.
Open mouth, pick it up.
Exactly.
Commissioner Libel?
Been a long summer. I really don't have anything today, but anyhow, yeah, I don't... Any upcoming events, I can't think of. Be careful, schools taking in folks and... A warning for schoolchildren and snakes. A lot of people are having snake incidents. The high water have them crawling.
That's right.
They're normally not, so I had an incident last week. I shared it on social media, and it was a big snake, but be careful. And my sister had one the same day, so anyhow, that's all I can share today.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, a couple of comments. First, I want to thank Sharon Trine for everything that she does with IFIS and in coordination with the 4H program and FFA and the fair. Growing up, my dad, we did have animals and stuff, but after we got into middle school, we started playing sports, so that kind of went on the wayside. So, it's really a learning experience for me to get back into what happens at the fair with the 4H program. I was honored to be able to help Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Turner cook the steaks for that event the other night, and then attended the majority of it, and we were able to see the students that are gonna go to the national championship present to us how they judge, how they judge a steer, or I think they actually did maybe a goat. So, anyway, it was very interesting and a learning experience to me. I just wanna thank you for all your efforts there, and congratulations to all those students. It was really incredible to see their poise and how calm they were presenting that in front of a judge, in front of about 200 people in the facility. And at a young age, I think most of them, some of them were 14 years old, 16, and that's a quality that they'll take life skills, you know, as they move forward with their schooling and with their careers. So, I just wanna thank you for that. I was honored to be able to attend that. And also, reach out to Dana Jones, the staff at the Chamber, Brian Bergman, and President Pickens this morning for that update of the Chamber. I have participated in a lot of the Chamber events, and some of them are the bath tournaments. And yes, we start parking boats at 3:00 in the morning. Taylor Douglas also usually takes care of a lot of that, and I thought he was crazy when he asked me to come up to park, you know, put a boat in the water and help park a truck at 3:00 in the morning. But that's when those tournaments start, and then they bring in a lot of outside recognition for Putnam County. And yes, you hear compliments from these professional fishermen that this is the best one that they go to. They like to come to Putnam County. They like the people here. They like the way the staff handles them, and it's a joy to have them. So, anyway, hats off to Dana and the staff of the Chamber, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I also want to mention the cooking the steaks the other night at the Fairgrounds. And what I'd like to mention is, you know, I enjoyed it. It was a lot of fun. But the accolades here between us go to Commissioner Harvey. He goes over there and he brings his grill, sets them up, buys the stuff, gets it all ready, and I show up, put on an apron, and grab a set of tongs and go to work. He even has the meat seasoned for you when you get there. So, you know, I... While I appreciate the opportunity, he needs the accolades for making it happen, because it takes him all day. We show up and cook.
Exactly.
So, anyhow, I'd also like to reach out and say, I think the Chamber does a wonderful job. As most of people know, I was chairman of the board for a couple of years. As most of people know, I was chairman of the board for a couple of years, and it is a big accolade to me that we were the Chamber of the United States of America. I usually laugh and call it Chamber of the World is what I call it, but every time they give me the opportunity. But it took a lot of effort, and it wasn't just me. It was the staff and how dedicated they are to make Putnam County a better place. I'd also like to mention that yesterday, we had DEO come to town for a roundtable. I think it was a nice event. They had a lot of the players in the state and the state officials come in here from different departments. This was the last of twelve for physical, physically underdeveloped counties or. Physically constrained counties, and they went through the motions of making out a list of top ideas and things that we were concerned about, and the people in the room voted on them, and they're gonna come back hopefully with a plan of some sort to help us along the path of trying to get where I know that everybody wants county to go, to a better place than what we are right now. The last thing I'd like to say under Commissioner Comments is, could we please do two things? Call people back. When they call us, can we call them back? You know, if we could work on that, I know that everybody's busy as a one-armed paper hanger. I get it, but we need to call people back that call us. And this isn't aimed at any one particular individual or one particular department, but it's just good business to call people back when they call you. I understand that sometimes that some of the people that call aren't as pleasant as we wish they would be, and because we know these individuals and have to deal with them on a regular basis, that we may not want to call them back. Those need to be the first ones we call back, not the ones on the end of the list. They need to be the first ones we call back, because we don't need to start ignoring people because we may not agree with their position on what's going on. The other thing that I'd like to recommend, can we have a presentation at a workshop on how we're doing the mowing? I would like to know, and I realize that I got a mowing schedule this morning, and I realize that you can't go by a schedule, because one day a rain blows your schedule from there on back. I get it. But if we could have some kind of a presentation, are we, I don't know, and I feel like I should. Have we got all five of our tractors with bat wing mowers in one area? Do we split them up into three areas? Do we have the ditch mowers or the swing mowers? Do we have them in certain areas as needed like we have? I know that's been going on some. I would like a presentation where I can get some better understanding of how we're doing the mowing, with it being the middle of August, it seems like, and it's not raining as much. And so, the calls that I'm getting now have gone from, they went from getting stuck in the middle of the road to getting stuck in the sugar sand, and now it's mowing. So, I would just like to be able to answer these calls a little more intelligently than what I'm able to do at the moment of how, where we are, how we do it. Do we put a mower in every area? Do we mow all in one end? I mean, just, I would like to have a better understanding if we could. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to congratulate you on the birth of your new grandson.
Thank you.
And you were off last week, you and your wife, enjoying that moment in your life, and congratulations. I do want to thank the Chamber, as I already did earlier. I mean, it's easy to get on that bandwagon, but we all know the hard work and dedication that goes on there and how you look forward to helping the people of Putnam County, just like we do. And we're in the same boat, rowing in the same direction, and I appreciate that. Also, want to give a shout-out to Vice Chairman Pickens, who did a remarkable job at the last meeting, understood our tiredness, and asked if we needed to take a recess for just a moment, but we purged on through and we made it through the process.
A twenty-five-minute meeting.
Seventeen minutes. But who was counting at that moment? But did a remarkable job.
He was great with the gavel, too, wasn't he?
Yes, and he's learning from a great leader, so we thank you very much. And it's just an honor, let me say this, as we, I want to echo something Commissioner Turner just said, you know, two weeks ago, dealing with people getting stuck in dirt roads. Last week, I'm getting complaints, and rightfully so, the roads were sugar sand, you know. But then Sunday afternoon, and West Putnam happened, and another three inches of rain fell out of the sky, and we're not dealing with sugar sand anymore. Press, I know you're overworked. I know that department struggles to keep up, but I'm with Commissioner Turner, you know, we've got to be able to tell people some, what are we doing? And everybody wants it done today. I get that, but, and I went out last night to look at a lady's place who was furious, and I wish most of the places around the county looked as good as hers did. But to her, she had a problem, and that's, I appreciate Commissioner, I mean, County Administrator Suggs, who's been walking around for the past few weeks saying, "We are in the customer service business," and I appreciate that more than you know. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my remarks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to thank Mr. Pickens for handling that while I was gone. Heard he did a great job. He didn't beat the gavel to death like I do. But I was gone for a week, only had a few phone calls. The weather was nice, thanks goodness.
We handled the rest of it.
Yes, you did. You handled everything, and rain did appear as soon as I came back here. I thought that was pretty nice.